Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays.
Present.
Ms. Papla.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Freeman.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Winfrey.
Present.
Ms. Galloway.
Present.
Ms. Van Buren.
Present.
Mr. Kincaid.
Present.
Thank you.
We all rise for a pledge of allegiance and then stay remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President. May we bow our heads for a moment of prayer. Thank you, Lord. Thank you so much for allowing us, one more time, to come together as leaders in the city of Flint. We pray and do hope that you would lead this meeting and allow the Holy Spirit to have its way, Lord. We are here, Lord, to do the business of the city, to do the business of the people. And Father God, please, let none of us be seen, but let your grace and your mercy shine through as we take care of the business of the people. Thank you, Lord, in all this I ask in Jesus' name. May we please have a moment of silence for a very special young man, Mr. Omari Humphre- Humphrey. They called him Little Mars. He has gone on to be with the Lord, and we know by no doubt he is now shouting hallelujah. So let us, please, acknowledge Little Mars and give him the honor today.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 150521 minutes. Do we have a motion?
A move, approval, support.
Been moved and supported.
Mr. President.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would move, um, I would do a substitute motion that the minutes be accepted with corrections. And there's one correction that I noticed on the minutes. It was a vote for the General Motors tax abatement, and it had Councilman Mays marked absent. That's not factually true. I was here. I've been in council meetings for thirty years, and I passed. And I don't want a record reflecting me as absent on a meeting that I was here. So I would move that the minutes be accepted with that correction.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there further discussion? I do have some discussion. Our rules allow for a yes, a no, or an abstain. There is no pass in our rules, and our rules are very specific as it relates to voting. And what we can do, as is our charter, so I'll be voting no on that. There isn't a provision within our rules or our charter that allows for a pass.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays.
As chairman of the Rules Committee, our rules also says that when you appeal the decision of the chair, then the chair has the duty and responsibility to ask and honor that appeal of the decision of the chair, and it's a procedure in a way about that. And you don't honor those rules, so you're picking and choosing which rules you want to honor. My position is this: When you ruled me as an absent, and the keeper of the records reflected me as an absent when I appealed your ruling as it relates to a pass, that's where the problems start. If you want to be a stickler for what the rules say, then in order to keep us from having chaos and arrests and warrants, then you should be a stickler for the appeal of the decision of the chair, and we probably wouldn't be sitting here at this juncture doing corrections of minutes. So I think if you are gonna, in discussion, talk about your no vote on a correction and want to mark me absent in the record when the facts of the matter was I wasn't absent, but I appeal your decision on that just like I appeal the rest of them, then you will end up being the one that, you know, look like you're double-talking. You want us to follow one rule, but you don't want to follow the others.
And my response to that would be, just like everybody else, you should just vote when you're called in.
And my response to that is God bless you. God bless you.
Is there any other discussion?
And God forgive you.
Is there any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please? On the substitute motion.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Papla.
No.
Mr. Nelson.
No.
Mr. Freeman.
No.
Mr. Davis.
No.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
No.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
The vote is four yes, five no.
Motion fails. That brings us back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on that? Can we have roll call, please?
Yeah, Mr. President.
I've called for the vote.
Mr. President.
Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Papla.
What are we voting on now?
Adoption of the minutes.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
No.
The vote is eight yes, one no.
Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the public comment. And for some of you that maybe have not been here before, this I, um, this portion, we kind of split it up for our public comment now. This portion is for items that are specific to agenda items only. So, um, do we have one person, it looks like, who signed up for this portion?
Yes, Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, just a reminder that this is for items specific to the agenda.
The tax rebate. My name is R.L. Mitchell, and I'm here, I design at 759 East Linden. And the General Motors tax debatement, uh, only person who spoke up against the General Motors was Councilman Davis. And the tax representation without represent is very wrong, and, and, and are very wrong for not including Mays in it, and when he, he helped build that plant, that truck assembly. And it's just like, this city is, becomes a city of God after that prayer Ms. Papla had prayed, and that's, it's now, it's not in your hands, now it's in God's hands. It's, and that's what y'all, you peoples get, Josh, you. Well, and the first thing to put in that museum behind Martin Luther King graveyard is the Frederick flag. Take that, what you were talking about, Councilman Mays Ward, and what the, what the, what the stuff you put out in front of record for the whole country can see, that the Frederick flag is down now in the south. And that's what I, I'm gonna stop right there. And take that to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next item on our agenda is petitions and unofficial communications. Can we have a motion to place those on file?
Move, approval.
It's been moved. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I would like the record to show that, you know, when I was wrongfully removed from the last council committee meeting, I'm behind on everything, and, um, you know, I will probably abstain on this motion.
Sounds good. Anybody else? Can we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nelson.
What are we voting on?
Uh, this is for our communication to place that file.
Okay. Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays. Ms. Papla.
Yes.
The vote is eight yes and one abstention.
Motion carries. We have no appointments, licenses, or normal resolutions from committee. We do have several that were pushed out from COW. If someone would like to make a motion on the mast resolution, I would request that we do take one of them out.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kincaid.
Um, Mr. President, I'd move, um, I'm gonna read the numbers because there's a point one in the mast resolution. I'd move 150490, 150491, 150492, 150493, 150494, 150495, which is a point one now, which was a correction, um, in a line item number. I would move 150496, 497, and I will stop right there for now.
We're down through 497. Okay. I would ask that you separate 491 at the request of purchasing. All right. So...
That's, uh, uh, Mr. President, that's 495.1 you're speaking over.
Yeah, 491 as well. 150491.
Okay, okay.
I think that's the second one. So we're 490 through 497 with 491 excluded. Did you get 492 in there as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other separations? Was that supported?
Support.
Supported? Okay. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays.
Yeah, I would ask that, um, in light of be, being removed from the committee meeting on last Wednesday when all of this stuff was discussed, I would ask for a brief explanation from the city administrator at this time on these agenda items that I'm being asked to vote on.
None of these items were discussed at that committee meeting? They were all discussed at the COW committee today?
Mr. President, they were on the, um, agenda in the committee.
All of these items were discussed in the committee meeting today?
Mr. President, um, I'm asking that the city administrator give me a brief, um, something on these items that we're being asked to vote on. I was in the committee at the whole meeting, and there was no real discussion on it, and you threatened to have me arrested if I said another word at a certain time. Now I'm out here in this public meeting, and I'm asking simply for the city administrator to give me and the public some information as to what we're fixing to vote on.
You've had this information since Friday, and I'm not going to ask the city administrator to come.
I appealed the decision of the chair.
Okay. There was no second for that motion?
Have you solicited a second?
Nobody came forward to offer a second.
Mr. Winfrey.
Okay, so...
No second for an appeal? We get information, and the public deserves it.
He has to call.
Do you, do you want to second his motion?
I can second if you, if you recognize me, I will.
All right. It's been moved and supported to appeal my decision, so...
Let's discuss your rationale, then I'll discuss mine.
I've already given my rationale, Councilman.
My rationale is this: Whether or not the appeal is won or lost, Mr. Winfrey, I, I, I'm appreciating you supporting that. Because whether one council person want to know something and the rest of them don't, that's how I, that's how I wrote. Anybody who need to know, need to know. And plus, when we voting on something in the public arena, just because we say names and numbers, it's always been a practice in this council to give the public some, um, information about what we're voting on. If this vote goes through, and there's no information on the record, just numbers, even though we had a wording, this is a different treatment. Because in the past, everybody who's requested had information given. So I appreciate you, Councilman Winfrey. I appreciate the work you done on the Rules Committee, and since they told me it's a warrant out for my arrest, I really appreciate it, 'cause all of these procedural things gonna end up in court. That's what should have happened last week, when a motion was, uh, made to appeal the decision of the chair. So God bless you, Mr. Winfrey, and whether they voted up or down, we're making a record, and things is gonna start to be done right around City Hall. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the appeal? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Freeman.
No.
Mr. Davis.
No.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Can I get some clarification on what we are voting for?
We're voting on the appeal of the decision of the chair.
No.
Ms. Van Buren.
No.
Mr. Kincaid.
No.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Papla.
No.
Mr. Nelson.
No.
The vote is, um, two yes, seven no.
Motion fails. So what's before us now is, um, those resolutions. Is there any further discussion on the resolutions?
Yeah. Mr. President, these resol-
Councilman Mays.
These resolutions has to do with money being spent as it relates to the water plant. Is that correct?
The resolutions are before you.
Okay, so we're voting on 15490, which is a resolution that the mayor and the city administrator on council approval are hereby authorized to enter in contract with William E. Walker for HAVC improvements for the Water Pollution Control. And if I ask that they be separated, then that ain't even up for debated. So I would ask that all of them be separated, and we voted, vote on them individually. And so that's what I'll ask. Now, that would be a substitute motion.
There's a motion on the floor?
That would be a substitute motion.
You're making a substitute motion to move these individually?
Yeah, because, because since we won't discuss them-
Is there support for that? That motion fails for lack of support.
That's fine. Then, Mr. President, on the one about the pollution control, which is 150490, and then 150491, which is a sludge collector, the such, sludge collector, since I was kicked out of the committee meeting, I don't really know what that is. Some of them I would vote for, and some of them I don't. And that's how we get information. Howard Croft should have been here. And so, believe me, I'm not gonna fall into a trap if they can't be separated, which normally doesn't require a motion, but I didn't think I would have to separate them if we had have got something from the city administrators to get paid a hundred and forty thousand to give us direction, and you blocking that. So now, in light of the way you're conducting this business in this meeting, y'all can vote on what you want as it relates to the water plant. I can't support no mess. And the mess is maybe not the specifics of these things, but the mess is the way that you run in these meetings in a different way. So God bless you again. I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Davis.
No.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
No.
Ms. Papla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, two no.
That brings us to 150491, and the administration has asked us to make this or to amend this in the last paragraph of that, um, resolution, just a kind of a typographical error. And I believe, Davina, you talked to Derek, and they wanted that amended. So, and it, it is resolved that the Department of Finance purchases and supplies upon City Council's approval is hereby authorized to issue a purchase order to EnviroDying Systems Incorporated for, and this is the part we're going to strike if we move forward, HVAC improvements to, we had strike those three words. And it would then read Incorporated for eight new slash replacement circular clarifier sludge collector units at the WPC facilities in an amount not to exceed three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. So would someone make that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move, um, the approval of the amendment and make this 150491.1 with those recommended changes.
There's a motion. There's support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, until we get back on track and until I'm allowed to participate for the first ward and get information for the resident, eleven thousand or so residents that I, um, represent, and I'm gonna keep pounding it home. They say a warrant has been issued for my arrest from last Wednesday's committee meeting. I'm not gonna be a part of this, and the first ward is gonna end up getting every piece of information it wants as it relates to sludge, money put in the water plant, weeds getting cut. I just ain't a part of no mess. So I'll be voting no again unless you allow Ms., um, Henderson to come up and give this councilman explanation. And then I'm gonna keep repeating that, because y'all not gonna keep putting me out in no meeting wrongfully. So I request that she come up and give Councilman Mays information on this as well.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
No.
Ms. Papla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, one no.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move 150518. Support approval.
Been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Councilman Kincaid.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to, um, clarify that when you look at the resolution by us approving the millage tonight to be on the ballot, it appears that it, um, is a six-year millage. It's really not. It's a five-year millage. The millage that was passed five years ago goes for another year. This allows for the MTA to, to go through with the Attorney General's Office and to start to get the finances, uh, together so that they can get it on the ballot, get it approved for future, um, ridership, uh, in our community. And I think it's very important, um, and I'm actually really pleased to see it here again early, because in the past, um, and I go way back in the past, we were at the last minute trying to get, um, resolutions approved for ballot language to get the MTA millage on the ballot for the vote. I, I think we all recognize, um, the service that the MTA provides in our community, and I think we all recognize what the real need is, uh, for that service in our community. So I just wanted to point out, this is a five-year millage, not what may appear, appear to be a six-year or an additional year on the millage that was already approved. And, um, I'm, uh, through, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kincaid. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, now-
Councilman Mays.
Was this brought up in the committee at the whole or any other committee prior to this?
This was brought up in the committee at the whole.
And so this one deserves some type of explanation different from the others. This is the most explanation I've heard on it since it's been allegedly brought up. And so, believe me, my attendance record compared to all of the council people sitting up here now in committee meetings, committee at the whole, and on this council, I'll compare it to any of y'all's, 'cause I know y'all been missing meetings when I ain't. And then I know it's a couple new people. So I don't miss meetings and get information. And so based upon the disrespect that's been given to me in the committee meetings and getting information and listening to Mr. Kincaid give this detailed information that I've never heard, it must have come up when I was absent. So for those reasons again, I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays. Ms. Papla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
The vote is, uh, eight yes, one abstention.
Mr. President, I'd move-
Motion carries.
I'd move 150519 for approval.
Support. Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, he say 15-
Mr. Mays. 519.
That's the resolution dealing with the, um, recognizing the founder society of the Flint Institute of Arts as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Flint for the purpose of obtaining a charitable, charitable gaming license. I know what that is, and I'll support that. But I'll say this to this council: Sometime when this council acts foolishly and treat people differently, it's gonna come back to haunt you. Because when I usually attend every committee meeting, and I, I can name y'all by name and let the public know who be, who miss, who's missing in action. And I'm telling y'all, when y'all see these people up here voting, and some of them don't half-know what they be voting for, it's a detriment to our city.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Papla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is gonna be liquor licenses, ordinances for first and second reading, none, which we have none. That brings us to our second public speaker. Portia?
Yep.
Yep, and this would be a more general public speaking opportunity where you can talk about whatever it is that you want to talk about. Who's on the list, Madam Clerk?
Okay, the first speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is R.L. Mitchell, and, uh, you know where I design at, I've been sitting long enough. But, but last Wednesday, I was at the council meeting in the room back there, and I was notice Mays was dismissed from, with your present in the policeman office. But anyway, we're past that, but, but on Friday, I was on my way to City Hall, but I was, uh, I was, uh, one of your assistant, Josh, running for mayor, Ms. Weaver. Her secretary told me to go down to City Hall right quick and see what's the commotion down there. I thought they was jumping on Mays again, but some little kids told me to get on the bus, and I end up in Lansing. And what I go up there for? I found out some whole stuff I didn't wanna visit this to Mays, because it, Madame Bishop woman, it was a, I end up on the Capitol of, uh, the government stepped, and he refused, he asked a question, is you here to protest? And nobody went answer him. And he wouldn't allow us to go inside the building. But then, oh, I was finna go in, and Madame, she said, you stay out, sir. I said, what? She said, strategy. But I found out when they was talking about this water with Mays, she said, something wrong with the plastic. These foreign countries, she, it take Councilman Nelson so much water to, to take a bath, and he buying that stuff, and look how big he is. And that's what she was talking about, that, them bottled waters, and they said, when you, everybody thirsty, said, drink this, and when you drink it, think about where it coming from. And I realized what she was gonna, it's, but I noticed Mary got, I mean, Mays got a water cup, and he wasn't there to speak up for himself. I figured that's what you were doing with that stuff, what, hey, I'm gonna let y'all figure it out. Hey, I'm gonna let y'all figure it out. He right there listening like he ain't in the room. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our next public speaker?
Our next public speaker is Mr. Stephen Sillick. Mr. Sillick?
Good evening. Hello, my name is... And I recognize the financial oversight from the city of Lansing, and I respect the situation that all of the councilmen are in in terms of this fiscal year, 2016. I want to wish you a productive and cooperative fiscal year, 2016. But I wanted to talk about the issues that Councilman Mays was raising before any conflict occurred five days ago. He was talking about the general land management practices that occur in the city of Flint. And I recognize on one hand that the parks are managed separately from the land bank. But today, and well, last week, I was mowing lawns with one of the eighty neighborhood representatives that cut down the more than ten-inch grass, which is considered blight between the sidewalk and the property, and as well the fifteen feet of space in the properties closest to the sidewalk. That project's called Clean and Green, and they're not always picked up while they're being managed. So I would say that that aspect of the land bank's practices has not been adequate in terms of its stated policy requirements, and I wanted to say it in public before the board rather than the land bank. I also think that blight management is, it's like a juggler. You can try to manage it, but it only gets worse. And so, is it really the best policy? I would suggest that agroforestry and a more proper selection of the plants that are going into the ground would be a wise, wiser measure that the council could recommend to the land bank. And to say that if it is in the interest of their projects, like the Chevrolet project near the river, which is a six million dollar investment, to select more desirable types of perhaps like walnut trees and high maintenance rather than the policy to select low maintenance which can grow just fine. But do they really attract the interested parties that they say are going to come and see those Chevrolet commons? The locust trees and the maple trees that tend to go in, they generally don't seem appealing to me in terms of the goals of those projects to bring more visitors in. But I would say that the goals of projects like these would be better taken into consideration to attract families that are interested in settling in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
We'll reserve our comments till the end.
Mr. President?
Our next public speaker?
Last time they adjourned before we got to the end, we lost a quorum. That's why I'm trying to do a point of information or a point of order.
We'll do it at the end, Councilman.
Good evening. My name is Michael Freeman. I live at two-two-five University Avenue. I serve as, on the Board of Trustees for Mott Community College, and I'm the president of the Carriertown Neighborhood Association. I'd like to come tonight to discuss with council or to make a request of council to consider our request. As many of you may know, recently, the boundaries of the Carriertown Historic Neighborhood Association were changed. These were done under the emergency manager who, at the very last minute, signed this without any significant public review. And we feel it was a very non-transparent process. I moved to Carriertown twenty-one years ago. Eighteen years ago, I started working with Glenn Fosdick, who was then the president of Hurley Hospital, and our meetings were over the land management practices of Hurley Hospital in Carriertown, where they were acquiring properties which were actually lived in. These were homes. They were rental units, they were single-family residences, they were purchased by Hurley Hospital for the intended purpose of putting in a nursing home facility. When that project did not move forward, and they found that they were not able to demolish these structures because they were in a historic district, they basically decided that it wasn't their responsibility. They didn't need to take care of them, they did not board them, they did not maintain these properties. And for many, many years, we had empty promises from Hurley Hospital that they were going to maintain them. Hurley is a city hospital, and so our building inspection department would never enforce upon Hurley Hospital in the way that they would on neighborhood residents. So we sat there year after year watching these properties degrade and degrade and degrade. Now Hurley's actually, they have this spin-out that says, we're just doing this for the neighborhood. We're making it cleaner and safer and nicer by demolishing all of these structures. We never asked for green space, and we never asked for demolition. We actually asked for them to care for and preserve the resources that we ourselves are asked to preserve and maintain. They didn't do that, and with the efforts of Peter Bade, creating a hand-selected group of people on a committee that would all ultimately vote to move the boundaries, a report that was written, and if you haven't written it, it's about four pages long. It provides no critical analysis of the district. What they did for Civic Park, which was really an example of the way that you do an analysis of historic district, that process was denied to us. We ask you to consider an injunction or at least stop in the process, an investigation, get to the bottom of this, and help us because our neighborhood has voted against this, and we need to preserve our historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Adam Gericks. Mr. Gericks?
Good evening. It's Gericks with a hard G. Actually, I'm here for two very simple reasons. I'd like all council to really pay attention to this one because about two and a half years ago, or whenever it was that Darnell Early came in and took over as a financial manager, I stood right here and presented a proposal that was taken up as a motion, seconded, and passed by this council. And I was told a week later that you have no power, we can't follow through with it right now because of financial managers in position. Well, now he's gone, and this is a motion that was carried by this council to investigate the very issue that Mr. Freeman just brought up on every level. Right down to building and safety inspections not following through and protecting those properties under demolition by neglect are historic preservation ordinance in the city of Flint. So this council has the responsibility to follow through with that motion, as I understand it. There's a procedural issue. My second thing that I want to bring up is that, as I understand it, the KWA Pipeline Board is in violation of the Incompatible Public Offices Act. Section three details the exceptions to the rule, Public Act this, Public Act that. The KWA Pipeline is formed under Public Act two thirty-three, which is not one of the exceptions. Therefore, the board of the KWA Pipeline is in violation of the Incompatible Public Offices Act. And this will be the third time that I am aware of that this council has allowed for that kind of violation of state law and completely ignored it. First with Johnny Coleman at Hurley, then Bernard Lawler, who's still a CPS supervisor, and now this entire KWA Board. So there's a procedural issue here. A motion was passed on one thing, and I would like another motion to be brought up to investigate the KWA Pipeline and the board concerning the Incompatible Public Offices Act.
Thank you.
There was a motion carried and passed, that's what I'm asking about. There's a procedure, right? So now a committee has to be formed? Thank you. Jeez, Sieg Heil, man.
Sieg Heil. Our next speaker? Who's our next speaker? Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Jack Panic.
He's left.
He's gone already. Our last speaker, I'm sorry, our next of the last speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. My name is Quincy Murphy.
Can you either take your conversation outside or take your seat? Because we do have a public speaker at the podium who deserves to be heard. And by you talking to people across the aisle and across the seats, it makes it difficult for me to hear that person. Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. I'm here, I was just cutting grass, so I just wanted to stop. I said, let me come down here and talk to you guys again about how important it is to do something about these weeds in the neighborhood. I'm out there cutting vacant lots with a push lawnmower. And Salem Housing got one zero-turn lawnmower that if I don't have twenty-five dollars or if somebody ain't done checked it out, then I gotta wait weeks to be able to use a zero-turn lawnmower to either cut Dewey Park or if I wanna cut some vacant lots. We just adopted a master plan probably one or two years ago, and now they only, like the young man said, they only cutting three feet, the land bank. That's not acceptable. And I'm willing to work with you guys, and I put together a plan that maybe some neighborhood groups can come up with and develop some cleanup plans for their neighborhood. But I am not willing to accept three feet from the sidewalk. I heard it's not fiscal responsible, but then I thought about us giving Genesee Tower away for a dollar, then taking eight hundred thousand dollars of community development block grant dollars to give to them to tear down. I don't think that was fiscal responsible, too. You could've used that money and gave neighborhood groups funding to help maintain these vacant lots. And I'm not here, because I'm here to point fingers, I'm here to let y'all know that I'm willing to work with y'all. But what I'm not willing to do, I'm not willing to settle for the land bank cutting three feet going past the sidewalk. That's not tol, we not gonna tolerate that. I'm gonna go to the land bank, I've been going to their meetings because I will be speaking to them. So I'm not only coming speaking because I like speaking before this podium. I was cutting grass, but I felt it was important that I come down here on a consistent basis to talk to you guys to let y'all know that it's a lot of us not settling for three feet past the sidewalk. If the land bank can't handle it, then they need to give up maintaining those properties because that is not our American dream to have vacant lots cut three feet past that. And y'all say losing tax revenue, we gonna really lose some tax revenue because people property values gonna go down based on y'all don't have funding to cut those vacant lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Our last public speaker?
Our last speaker is Mr. James Moore. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, James Moore, forty-seven oh-nine Wisdom Street. I'd like to address this governing body, the council. I would like to take the time that I have to share with our city official to give her the opportunity to use my time to come down and to address the other concerned citizens that have come out to hear what the lady might have to say because I believe that we're going in the right direction. And I'd like to hear what she has to say addressing some of these her issues. I know it's not much time, but the lady will do the best that she can, if she will, take my time to be able to speak on our behalf if y'all will allow her. Because I think the rest of the residents would like to hear what the city manager has to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public speakers?
No, that's Mr. President.
Okay, a couple of things. Mr. Freeman, we'll put it on the agenda, Planning and Development, which is next Wednesday, to get an update from the administration as to what this Carriertown thing is, what the process was, and what it means moving forward. And it's probably a better place to have that discussion than here in the council meetings. So next Wednesday, those committee meetings start at four-thirty. Is Planning Development first or second? It comes in as a second, so it'll probably be closer to six, just depending how long we discuss things at the previous meeting.
Second, who cares? That Kincaid?
Councilwoman Galloway.
Can we research the issue that Garrett brought up? I think it was Garrett. Was it Garrett? Okay. To understand what his concern was with KWA?
Yeah, we can send that as referral to the attorney's office, the incompatibility of KWA and members of this body sitting on that board.
And then also, Councilman Freeman, I think we were, I don't know which meeting we had said that the discussion would come up, but we were going to get some information on the land bank having, I don't remember what the right word, immunity. If we could get that information, I don't know which meeting that's going to be shown, shared in, but to understand what the dynamics of immunity is. And if that, if that in any way causes them to not fulfill all of their obligations and responsibilities because of that immunity, we just want to make sure that if we are extending that to them, that they're not abusing it. So, thank you.
We'll make sure that's on the appropriate agenda for Wednesday.
Mr. President?
Is there anybody else? Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to Ms. Galloway, that referral was made to come to the committee at the whole along with the ordinance as well. It didn't show up. I made those requests for that to come to the committee as a whole. The president and them do what they wanna do, it didn't show up. That was the request the record would show. Also, to the people that Councilman Davis is talking to right now, I would not just ask that it be put on the agenda, I would ask that they be given a certain time on the agenda as well in that committee. I want those people who know about that Historic District Commission to be able to come to that meeting, not just put it on the agenda, but I want those people to be able to speak in that council committee meeting to hip this council as to what's happening. Because the city administrator has made it clear that she and/or the emergency manager, Mr. Gericks, and to you have taken away our greatest power to investigate. We don't have subpoena power anymore. The charter gives us subpoena power. And my colleagues, particularly the president and others, have not fought for us to be able to investigate. If you know the term perfunctory, going through the motions just a perfunctory manner, you're gonna know more about that stuff than some of us are. And we don't have subpoena power. So I'm making a request that not only do you put it on the agenda, but you allow these people time unlike in a normal committee meeting, that they too be able to talk in that committee meeting, back and forth as you do your inquiry. And so I request that, that they be able to do that. That has not happened. And so it's been a lot not happening as to people in the public being treated like people who can help counsel, so forth and so on. So that request is so made. Also, as it relates to what you said, Mr. Murphy, it's unacceptable. Mr. Murphy, that's in fact what I was arguing about when they put me out the meeting. But it really wasn't an argument, it was my turn to be on the floor. And I talked about certain wards getting more service based upon who they were supporting as mayor. And I gave specific examples of the first ward being cut first. And I said Pearson Park looked like a hayfield. And we talked about whether or not the school board had a responsibility for cutting its own property. And then we talked about the enforcement of the ordinance. The ordinance, as I've known it over the years, I've been around twenty, thirty years, said that when grass reaches a certain level, we take our own equipment and cut it and build a property owner. That equipment has been sold. So I asked that that ordinance be brought back for amendment because it's just an obsolete ordinance. If we sell the equipment as a city, we can't enforce the grass-cutting ordinance on the books. And that's what was going on in that meeting, and the city administrator said she knew and didn't know what the ordinance said. So I made a referral that that ordinance be brought forward in committee. In addition to that, Mr. Murphy, we talked about the land bank, who is the largest land owner in the city, having immunity to the ordinance. And so that was a debate or contention. I asked that the rules and regulations that allow the land bank to have immunity from being cited by the city in order to make it look better, that those rules on immunity be brought. Now, if they gonna stick with immunity, I made one other referral. I asked that they give me the cost per ward, per city, of what we pay the land bank to cut one time. Because if they're telling us they gonna cut only one time, and they cut the first ward first, I told them two months ago when I started talking about grass cutting, that it was gonna look like a jungle. And then I said that the council can inquire and ask, and the mayor and the city administrator can order employees. I also made a motion for two hundred thousand be spent for weed cutting that passed because they had a reserve from the last fiscal year of four hundred and ninety-five thousand. In the committee meeting, that weed abatement was on the agenda when they wrongfully put me out because I was talking a certain way about weed cutting and what I wouldn't tolerate. The city administrator said she found... The city administrator said she found twenty thousand in the general fund. I asked that that twenty thousand be used to buy another zero turn for the exchange hub, which used to be Salem, and that it be used to get one of them push brush hawks that I used. See, I'm the only elected official up here right now who took the three-hour class to use the equipment from the exchange hub. And I've used it. I told them I cut at twelve nineteen West Home, which had been cited by the city. And then I told them I cut on Orange Lane and Banbury. I told them if they don't want to hire people, then I got plenty of time on my hands, but if you get the equipment that you're referring to, that it's a two-week backlog to rent at the exchange hub for the twenty-five dollars, I can cut probably seven, eight hours off the day for free. You ain't got a contract out. I also told them that I got block club presidents in the first ward and block club members.
Councilman Mays, can you wrap it up, please?
And yeah, I can wrap it up. And block club members who would also cut. And so when I talk in detail like this, because some people don't know, some don't seem to care, and some didn't get their ward cut first and ain't looking like the first and third wards, then you get told to wrap up, you out of order, and then you get put out the meeting and police call. And then what happens five or ten minutes later? The meeting adjourned. Because it really wasn't no business that was urgent. That shows me that these people ain't serious about taking care of the business of the city. They just love control. And I guess to be known as council people.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any further? Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'd like to know, could we revisit the motion that was submitted about a year or two ago when it said that it was passed on the historic district? Is there any way that we can get that information? Or if that's true, I wasn't here, that preceded me?
Yeah, we can bring that, our staff can get that information as to what was.
And also, I would like to know because.
Bring it to committee.
Okay. And also, I would like to know because this is my ward and I represent you guys because you are in my ward. And I love the historic district as well over by Carriage Town. Is it something that we can do to put a stop hold at this particular time so that no one, so that they don't go over there and try to demolish these homes over there in that historic area? Is there something we can do? Like, can we discuss that at Planning and Development? And is something that maybe we can come up and see what remedy or what alternatives we can have or anything that we can do in regards to that?
Right.
Okay.
That was the purpose.
Okay, all right. All right.
All right. That brings us now to council discussion. Let's try everybody to limit our comments to five minutes. And I'll start with Councilman Kincaid.
I'll have anything tonight, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes, I just have a short notice. I don't know if you're aware of the free movies that are going on behind City Hall sponsored by Communities First. They've already had two of them. I usually will come out to kind of just see how it's going. We have like several hundred, like, children and adults out there. They bring their lawn chairs, their blanket, they're out there playing. There's organized games as they prepare to watch the movies. Then there's popcorn and pop and so forth. So there's two more movies coming up. It's a very nice activity. There's a lot of parking behind City Hall. There's a number of adults to help supervise. And the next one will be August fourteenth, and then the last one will be September the eleventh. The days have been great. Please enjoy something that's very good for the families. Support this organization. They are doing a number of things throughout this community to try to help support knowledge and involvement throughout this community. The other thing is, I hope that some also took advantage of the downtown activities this past weekend. I mean, the Buckingham Alley activities, the art activities that were going on, the food carts that are out there, we need to keep supporting that so that way the city can become more alive. And we can attract people from the outside to make, see how Flint could be maybe a place for them to maybe even continue to live and make and support what's going on. This is a time of year that we have so much going on in this city. Sometimes you can't get to all these activities. There was a nice festival, the African-American Festival off LaPierre Road sponsored by Christ the King Church. Excellent food, excellent entertainment, and it was a neighborhood event. So please pay attention to what's going on. So much for families and children, so much just if, even if you're not a resident of the city, you know, take the time to explore it. We, the area is so busy trying to make things more positive besides just the negatives that go on. Let's support the positive and hopefully it'll grow and grow. And in closing, I would like to offer thank you to many people who offer condolences to me and my family during the last sudden loss of my brother last week. We had his funeral, and to see the number of people and friends that he knew. I'm from a family of eight, and he was the first one that we have lost in our family. And it's still something that happens that it's not always easy to deal with. And sometimes you don't, you think you can deal with it, but I think your body still is, there's things going on. I mean, even, I have problems with high blood pressure, and I almost didn't make it to the meeting tonight because all of a sudden I started having problems. And I don't know why, because really I consider myself pretty well together. But when something's important to you, and I don't mean just family, I also mean this community, you feel it. And I know when you come up to talk, I know you're talking from the heart. Some of you live it, day in, day out, like Quincy Murphy, you know? So let's support each other, let's help each other, not tear this city down, but make it happen, make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Winfrey?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Oh, yes. I was talking to an elderly lady today, and she gave me some education. And she was speaking about, and maybe some people in here may understand it, or maybe Quincy may understand it, it's called grade A. Know how you dig into the ground and you get all those weeds and all that stuff out of there? So when they knocking down these homes, that we should be able to do some grade A, like getting into there, grinding it in real good, getting all those weeds and all the old grass and old roots and stuff out of there. And she said, and then when you smooth it out, the grass never grows anymore. Only thing you have to do is just cut the edges. It never grows no more. It grows to a certain length and it looks real nice and looks real pretty, and you just edge it. And you never have to worry about it no more. And when she said it to me, I was so enlightened. I said, wow, I said, that's what you do? She said, yeah. I said, oh, I said, okay, well, maybe I learned something today, you know? I don't know if anyone in the audience knows anything about it, but it was, it sounded, it was enlightening to me. And maybe it was, and she said, and it's cheaper because you never have to worry about going over there cutting it no more, and you don't have to spend a lot of time into it. It just don't, it only grows at a certain length, and that's it, and it's done. And I said, well, man, maybe that may be something that I would bring to the table if a discussion come up when I'm at council about these, this tall grass. And so now I brought it up, and maybe it's something that council, we can talk about and maybe dig into it and see if that's necessary or that's something that we can do, you know? I don't know much about grade A, but I'm just bringing it to the table. Maybe somebody else might know, and we can have a discussion about it in the long time and, you know, later on or sometime down the line. But however, I want to get to the historic district and speak about that. I think that they have a good argument in regards to the historic district. And it is brought to my memory, Civic Park was treated the same way, but then at some time, the ball was dropped when it came to the historic district over there by Carriage Town. And I just want to make sure that they are treated equally with Civic Park. And if we can figure this out on how we can prevent this demolition and preserve this historic park, then that would be something that I would want to do. I just want to make sure that they treated equally like Civic Park. And if they are not treated as Civic Park, then I think that's a great form of injustice. But I don't know. I don't know. I gotta read it and understand what was done for Civic Park and what wasn't done for the historic district. But from the little knowledge I've got from you guys, it sounds like that you're not treated fairly. And so we're gonna go, and I'll be at the Planning and Development meeting, and we'll rehearse over this, and we'll go through the details, and I'll compare the Civic Park with the historic district over in Carriage Town, and we'll figure it out. So I will support that, you know? I really, you know, it's something that's really touching to me. It's my ward, and I think we should get on that and figure it out. When it comes to the grass cutting, Quincy, you are on point. You do a lot of good things for your area, and you do a lot of good things for the community. And it is an outcry in society that this grass needs to be cut because it becomes a detriment to the community, it becomes a detriment to kids. But most importantly, it becomes a detriment to seniors when they get out their car at night and they got this tall grass. People can be laying in it, hiding, waiting to prey on them. And it just, and most, and overall, it just devalues our community. I see things on the east side and the north side that I just don't see when I go in Sworsh Creek and I go in Flushing and I go in Grand Blank. And I think it's time that we start paying more attention to what's going on on the north end and the east side and south and west as well. I just think that we've ignored some of these issues for quite some time, and I think we need to really start picking up the pace. And this is an issue that I brought up back in the winter when I was the chairperson of Planning and Development, and I asked that we draw a preventive plan so that it's not a repeat of what we went through last year. Because right now it seems like it's a repeat of what we went through last year when it comes to the grass cutting. And there was some dialogue about it, and we actually said that we was gonna be a little proactive in drawing the preventive measurements so that it doesn't occur. Unfortunately, the ball was dropped somewhere. But I think that we got some money and some time that we can really pick this ball back up. And I just think it's something that we need to be a little more cautious about and just start picking the pace up. So Quincy, I agree with you. We do need to start, you know, bringing the value of our communities back up. So that's basically what I want to talk about, and that's, I'm gonna conclude it and yield my right to Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Nelson, you have anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Councilman Davis. This name is being repeated because this man lives the life that he preaches about. He's in the community every day. I've been up to Dewey School, and he's hardworking with the children up there. He's got tents set up all over the place. He's making sure the kids stand active. And besides that, after that program ends, he's cutting grass around this not just third ward, anywhere that he can help out. And Mr. Murphy does a good job of that. And that's why I've sat down with the mayor and I told the city administrator that it is not acceptable. I voiced that opinion. They vowed that they're looking at avenues to help us. I believe they are, but we've got to have and work together as a team to get this resolved. I don't know how often that my colleagues' phone rings about tall grass, but my phone ring quite often about the tall grass. And so we have to come together and work together and bring this tall grad, this tall grass issue to an end. And I think if we work together, it will happen. Quincy, thank you for all your hard work that you do. The next thing, Mr. Mays brought up something about attendance record, but I want the record to be clear that I've been here. I don't want people to think that I have not been here. And I take it personally, and I don't say he aimed it at me, but I'm just saying, I want the record, and the record will show, Councilman Nelson has been here. And I'm working every day for the third ward in the city to make a difference in this community. And that's why I need all of my colleagues, and I need the mayor and the city administrator to work with us. Ms. Henderson is new to our city, but I'm thinking she knows from the conversations that she's had with us that we love this city that we live in. And so I think she's working to open avenues to make things happen along with the mayor. I really do. But I will say this tonight in my closing, that it will take an effort of all of us to come together and do the best thing that's what's best for the people in the city of Flint. Yesterday, I went to three church services, and in the midst of the church services, people are asking about the grass. When are we going to address the issue? I know you're trying. So Ms. Henderson, you and the mayor and Megan, let us, let all of you sit down and let's come with something to this, to satisfy this city. We've got an issue out there. We want to address it, and I know if we work together, we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Poppin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few things. First of all, the grass. I've got numerous calls on grass, and I've gotten to the point where if we can't cut the grass, then just kill the grass. And I have told people to go to Home Depot. There is some three sixty-five, and you can buy that, and it won't come back until next year. So if you really want to get rid of this grass, the city can't cut it, land bank's not doing enough, then go to Home Depot and get you some three sixty-five, because I have a vacant house next to me, and that's exactly what I did. Now, on to the next business. I want it ASAP. A few good men and a few good women. Opening very soon, we have a police mini-station on Clio Road that will be at the Hallwood Plaza, which will be housed in the old Radio Shack. And we are in need of volunteers to help man the new mini-station in the second ward. We're looking for retirees who will be trained for the office, or anyone from the second ward or our community who cares to help in any way. You will be welcome. So we're asking you to do something good for your city and for your ward. Next, everybody knows that the Blues Festival is usually at the library. Well, it's not at the library this year. But our Blues Man, Mr. Maurice Davis, has taken on the challenge, and we're gonna have it in the Civic Park area, which I'm going to speak momentarily on to clear up a few things for Mr. Davis over here. We're looking for food vendors, clothing and jewelry vendors, and this is going to be a citywide function, just like it was at the library, but it'll be in the Civic Park area. So you can contact me, or you can contact Blues Man Maurice Davis. Now, back to Civic Park. I believe in historic, but we had some parts of Civic Park that I do know. General Motors was not coming back to build, not near a house, not one house. And some of it had to go. It was burnt down to the ground. The few people that lived and stayed there, and Mr. Maurice Davis was one that had his business and still has his business there. Some of those houses had to go. They were historic, but they had to go. And some of them, people fought. Some of them would have still been standing when those same people was dead and gone. And there were no more General Motors that's coming to build the cute little houses that they did for the workers fifty and sixty years ago. I believe in historic. I believe in saving some of the city. That's one reason why Cincinnati has thrived, because they have put the old with the new. And we've got to learn how to do that, too. But, Mr. Davis, we had a big problem in Civic Park. So by the grace of God, the state of Michigan, Washington, D.C., we got some of those houses down that need to be dealt with. Okay? So we thank everybody for that job that they did. So that's the little difference between your little historic and my little historic.
No, they don't want theirs torn out.
No, we know they don't want theirs torn out. Ours needed to be torn out.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So that's.
Councilman Mays?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, first I'd like to say hello to the young people in the. Yeah, first, I'd like to say hello to the young people in the audience. Hey, 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 hey. I would like to say this. It's a scripture, Proverbs, the third chapter, the fifth and sixth verse. Trust in God with all thine heart; lean not to thy own understanding. Acknowledge him in all thy ways, and he shall direct thy path. The reason I say that, because I'm speaking to the public now, and I'm speaking, if this stuff is still recorded, to the audience out in the community. This council should be helping take control of running this city. This council meeting started at about six o'clock, and now, when they start talking to wrap up, it's about seven o'clock, five after seven. This council is responsible for a budget that it ain't even seen. We ain't even seen the two thousand sixteen budget, what, what we call a walkthrough. It's stuff in the budget that we don't even know, because the emergency manager adopted it when we were supposed to go through the process and adopt it. That's one of the major pieces of business of the city council, the adoption process of the budget. Another major piece of the city council's work is subpoena power. If we had to investigate and call people in from the law department or the records bureau, sir, as it relates to the historic district, we shouldn't have to beg. And if people don't answer our subpoenas under the charter, then the circuit court across the street, um, enforces that. But the emergency manager and this city administrator, when I ask in council meetings about us having our power as the council, you know, they wanna silence me. They tell me in the council meeting today, in the committee at the whole, that if I speak more than two minutes, I'm gonna be arrested. I've never experienced in twenty years of council meetings since Chester Simmons, Woody Athely, Floyd McCree, Mr. Sargentson, Verdel Duncan. No council person has ever been treated this way for merely trying to exercise freedom of speech and do the business of this city. This council is full of some rotted politics. I repeat that. Rotted politics. It's rot, it's righteous. And it's so righteous that if the public don't catch on to what these guys are doing... Now, I was informed today that they done issued a warrant for my arrest, as it relates to speaking about weeds in a committee meeting. I noticed today that if I spoke wrong, they had it all set up to get me arrested. I'm not no wild ignorant council person. I'm a well-educated graduate of Michigan State University who just don't go along to get along. My job is to service my community. If you call the people in the first ward who called Councilman Mays, you gonna be surprised that when they call, I make my referrals to the administration. I do three-way calls, and we've got a track record for taking care of that part of the business. The problem I see is this part of the business. If we just allegedly coming out of emergency manager law, and our hands supposed to be untied, and we got catch-up to do, we shouldn't meet for an hour and go home. Our meetings are supposed to be open, public and transparent. The mayor, the department heads, the chief of police, the fire chief, the street department, everybody should be up here, and you should be able to see us take care of business openly and transparent. I wouldn't care which council person wanted to hear something from the city administrator. If Mr. Freeman wanted to hear it, she gonna stand up. Believe me, citizens of the city of Flint, all people should be treated equally. It should be open and honest, and I believe that this community is not as dumb and ignorant as some of these people believe. Because I've seen people come to me and say, man, I see what's happening down there. Can you believe they spending more resources on me for appealing the decision of the chair? You know I'm gonna ask for a jury trial? This orderly conduct in a meeting, and I'm probably one of the most educated and smartest ones up here, in some cases, don't know everything, but I did chair the rules committee. So I don't think it's working. And Ms. Henderson, if you in control, don't let nobody fool y'all. When the emergency manager left out of here, he put the city administrator at a hundred and forty thousand over the council, the mayor, the chief of police, the water department, and they wanna act like they in control and won't even meet long enough to take care of the city business. I don't wanna be called a council. I wanna be called Councilman Eric Mays. I want my dignity and respect, and I want anybody who wants service to call me at nine two two forty-eight sixty. I don't even wanna stay up here in this mess. Walling has not did what he's supposed to do. The old council people have not did what they supposed to do, and it's a failed leadership. So I'm gonna say, God bless you. Lean not to your own understanding. Trust in God. Stand for something or for anything. Treat people equally. The golden rule say, chair meetings and do unto others, and treat the public as you would have them do unto you. Last meeting, Mr. President, this council in the minutes didn't reflect it. They adjourned and just got up and left. And they got up and left, and this meeting adjourned for a lack of a quorum. I would submit to this council that we might need to help take control of this city. We might need to start putting important business on the si, on the agenda, meet for two and three hours. We got catching up to do, and quit giving these speeches and playing these games, and roll up your sleeves and go to work. And you need to fight for your subpoena power and your budget process power. And then and only then will I say we working together. But all this petty discrimination and messing with Councilman Mays need to go. I filed a damage claim on this mess. I will file a lawsuit on this mess for the eleven thousand-plus people I represent, and we gonna demand that we be treated fairly, decent, and just like everybody else. God bless the public, and God bless the city of Flint.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, just a reminder to my colleagues, and then also for the public, Wednesday, we do have a budget workshop to go over our, um, budget in detail with the budget director, or the finance director. It'll be at five thirty. It'll be a committee, the whole meeting in the back room. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Been moved, is it supported?
Support.
Moved and supported. We have, uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, ain't no discussion on the motion to adjourn.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's a fact.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman, Mr. President, we have all...
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Papla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yep.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
The vote is, uh, seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.